Welcome to the regular meeting of Court Pledge of Allegiance Council of September 24th. Before we go into any of our regular things, I need a motion from the floor to accept Mrs. Hansen as our clerk for this evening, as Mrs. Springer is ill tonight. I'll make a motion. Thank you. Could I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, all those in favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Mrs. Hansen will be our clerk for this evening. Now would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance for Lord's Prayer and a moment of silence for our men and women serving overseas.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father, who art in heaven, how thou dost be thy name, thy people of earth, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. We desire to have patience, but deliver us from evil, who in his kingdom, in power, and glory forevermore. Amen.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Cobbler?
Present.
Mr. Ockerman?
Present.
Ms. Banko?
Present.
Mrs. Mel?
Present.
Mr. Snyder?
Present.
Mrs. DeFries?
Present.
Ms. Phillips?
Present.
Thank you. We have no minutes this evening again because Mrs. Springer is not here. The chair notes that certification has been received regarding compliance with the rules and notification this meeting, and tonight we have a guest presentation by Compassionate Friends.
I think all of our parents are coming up.
Yeah, that's fine. That's great.
A child's death is not what we expect from life's natural course of events. We assume that children outlive their parents, and when this unthinkable tragedy occurs, it is hard to imagine that anything can make a family whole again or allow us to move forward with our lives. A little over a year ago, we imagined a place of solitude, a place to reflect, and a place to remember our children. We wanted to create a place to soften the sadness of visitors who needed a special place to honor the memory of their child, in those parents' biggest fear that their child will be forgotten. As we look around at the names and scribe on the pavers at our children's memorial, we know that they will always be remembered. Many years from now, visitors will know who our children are. They did exist. This memorial is not only for our children, but all of the children in this area who have died. The legacy of the love for the children, a legacy of love and caring, will always be felt at our children's memorial. This is our gift to the community, our way of saying thank you for the support we have received. It's our way of saying that we care about all of the children who have died and their families. Maybe you will visit our memorial one day and sit in the shade of the trees and remember our children. It is our hope that you will enjoy it along with the memory of all the children. It is our dedication to remember and honor them. Our children lived, and our children's memorial will show the world. The mission of the Compassionate Friends: When a child dies at any age, the family suffers intense pain and may feel hopeless and isolated. The Compassionate Friends provides highly personal comfort, hope, and support to every family experiencing the death of a son or daughter, a brother or a sister, or a grandchild, and helps others better assist the grieving family. Today, when we visit Lakeview Park and our memorial, we know that we have accomplished our mission. We cannot thank the city of Port Clinton enough for the continued support for the compassionate friends of Ottawa County. You allowed us to remember our children in such a way that can be shared with the community for years to come. Because of you, we have a place to visit, remember, and reflect. We also need to thank the city employees and some others: Matt Holcomb, Sam Halstad, David Glasser, Hickman, Tim Smith, Vince Leong, Larry Holman, Bergman Orchards, Family Campground, Ottawa and Urban, Ottawa Seneca and Sandusky Solid Waste District, Mary's Blossom Shop, our friends and family for their continued support, and most of all, our parents, who spent countless hours building this memorial. We have a certificate we would like to present to the city in honor for all you have done for our parents and our children. This is a certificate of recognition with deep appreciation. We wish to thank you for your contribution and concern in helping grandparents, grandparents, brothers, and sisters. You are truly a friend of the Compassionate Friends, and we thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you feel you don't want to stay for the whole meeting, it's good. Now's your time to exit. Auditors report.
Nothing.
Treasurers report.
Madam President, I pass out a report tonight for the month. I also want to report that we had an investment committee meeting. This is required annually by the state, and so we had the meeting with Mayor Leong, Auditor Hatfield, Lawyer Andrew Rober, and Finance Chairman Cobbler, and saw all cities.
Safety Service Director report.
Just a couple of things. Phase two of Sixth Street project is going on schedule. They'll probably start pouring curbs next week on the portion. When I say phase two, it's from Jefferson to Harrison. So that should start getting going. They are on schedule to start asphalt work probably towards the end of October, so we feel pretty confident we'll get it before the cold weather and everything should be good in that area. Safe routes to school will be starting in the next week to 10 days. There'll be new signage, there'll be some markings in the streets, and of course, the sidewalks at various locations in the city. The Harvest Festival is this weekend. It will be closed downtown starting on Thursday, so Thursday all day and through Sunday night all downtown, the 100 and half of the 200 block will be closed for the festival. Obviously, you've seen where flushing hydrants. If you get any dirty water, leave your water running for five, 10 minutes, and you should be in fine shape. And also, the other project we have going on Taff Street that is moving forward, it seems like they are making some good headway out there, so I'm happy the way that project started out. Thank you, Madam President.
I have been able to get home every night, so from Taff Street, so I'm glad. Police Chief report.
Nothing tonight, Madam President.
Fire Chief report.
Nothing tonight, Madam President.
Under correspondence, I have the minutes of the ER Committee from 9:17, the Finance Committee from 8:20, the City Planning and Development Committee from 9:17, Parks and Rec from 9:10, laws, rules, and ordinance from 8:29, and the Treasurers report. Could I have a motion to accept the correspondence as stated?
Send it back, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Could I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Banko. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We will now go to the reading of Ordinance and Resolutions. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only, Ordinance 33-13.
Ordinance 33-13, and ordinance amending ordinance number 37-12 of the City of Port Clinton and adjusting accounts within the City of Port Clinton.
Thank you, this council wishes to take any action this evening on Ordinance 33-13.
Madam President, I move we adopt Ordinance 33-13.
I have a motion to adopt Ordinance 33-13. Do I have a second?
Second, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Any discussion? Seeing none on the court, please call the roll.
Mr. Ockerman?
Yes.
Ms. Banko?
Yes.
Mr. Snell?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFries?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Cobbler?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 33-13 has passed. We'll now go to second readings of ordinances and resolutions. The court please read by title and summary only, Ordinance 34-13.
Ordinance 34-13, and ordinance amending section 911.03 of the codified ordinances of the city and declaring an emergency.
This council wishes to take any action this evening on Ordinance 34-13. Mr. Cobbler?
Madam President, I'd like to wish to waive the three required readings on ordinance.
I have a motion to waive the three required readings on Ordinance 34-13. Do I have a second? Second, Madam President. Thank you, Ms. Banko. Any discussion on the reading, waiving of the readings? Mr. Cobbler?
Madam President, this ordinance deals with the reduction in tapping fee for sewer connections in Port Clinton, and this would extend that reduction for a position of here that is set to expire within this meeting.
Prior to our next meeting?
Correct.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Banko?
Yes.
Mrs. Mel?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFries?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Cobbler?
Yes.
Mr. Ockerman?
Yes.
Ms. Banko?
Yes.
Mrs. Mel?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 34-13 has passed. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only, Ordinance 34-13? Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Any discussion?
Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Banko?
Yes.
Mrs. Mel?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFries?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Cobbler?
Yes.
Mr. Ockerman?
Yes.
Thank you. This council wishes to take any further action on Ordinance 34-13. Mr. Cobbler?
I'd make a motion that we retain the emergency clause on Ordinance 34-13.
I have a motion to retain the emergency clause on Ordinance 34-13. Do I have a second?
Second, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mrs. Mel?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFries?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Cobbler?
Yes.
Mr. Ockerman?
Yes.
Ms. Banko?
Yes.
Thank you. This council wishes to take any further action on Ordinance 34-13. Mr. Cobbler?
I have a motion to adopt Ordinance 34-13.
I have a motion to adopt Ordinance 34-13. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFries?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Cobbler?
Yes.
Mr. Ockerman?
Yes.
Ms. Banko?
Yes.
Mrs. Mel?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 34-13 has passed. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only, Ordinance 35-13?
35-13, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to enter into an agreement with Arcadis U.S. Incorporated for engineering services and declaring an emergency.
This council wishes to take any action this evening on Ordinance 35-13. Seeing none, we will move back for its last reading to the October 8th meeting. We have no new readings of ordinances and resolutions, so we will go to business from the floor. Mr. Cobbler?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a reminder, the gathering meal is this Thursday, September 26th, 4:30 to 6:00 at St. John Luther Church. That's on the corner of Second and Adams. It's a free meal, open to the community, and the Port Clinton City candidates for 2013 will be these servers of the meal. So I hope to see a lot of you there. I have one statement that I'd like to read, and this concerning basically the Waterworks development. Now, some have said that I'm anti-development because I question the Washington properties' conceptual proposals that have been brought to council, and nothing can be proven true. I am for development that will benefit the city and all who work and live here. I want to see the city prosper and grow, but I am not for pursuing a development that focuses primarily on the developer at the expense of our city's most valuable asset. We have an obligation to those we represent to make sure we do this right. I'm not content with vague ideas and conceptual drawings. Council waited patiently for six months for a formal proposal, only to receive a second conceptual drawing. A motion was made to vote and move forward with negotiations, a mere five days after being presented with the second conceptual drawing, and less than an hour after receiving a third conceptual drawing. I could not vote in favor of a motion that took away councils and the community's opportunity to discuss the development of the property and put it in the hands of the mayor, his committee, and the developer. Now, I realize my actions have caused me, have cost me some very dear supporters because of the claims of some that I'm against development, just because I want this to be my right. All I can say is, I will not just be a yes man who will not question issues that come before council. I just can't be that person. On the other hand, if you want someone to do their own research, ask questions, and look for other sources for answers, I am that person. With that in mind, I welcome the opportunity to meet with Mr. John Alexander at the planning and development meeting last Tuesday. I attended this meeting along with Mrs. Mel, Ms. Banko, and Ms. Phillips. All council members and the administration were aware of this opportunity. Mr. Alexander is the former city administrator for the city of Perrysburg, Lucas County Administrator, chief of staff of the commission, and Toledo Public Safety Director. Mr. Alexander is extremely well qualified with his years of experience to provide insight and advice on developing the Waterworks property. During our meeting, Mr. Alexander spoke about risk management and having a development agreement in place. He talked about protecting public access and resolving conflicts that arise between those desiring development and those that are resisting change. Mr. Alexander talked in great length about a return on investment, not just how a development might enrich the city's coffers, but how it could enrich the community as a whole. Now, I can't speak for Ms. Phillips, Ms. Banko, or Mrs. Mel, but I came away from the meeting with Mr. Alexander with the confidence that as a Port Clinton City Councilman, I can and will make correct and informed decisions as this process evolves. Mr. Alexander provided us with a wealth of information for free, and I appreciate his taking the time to meet with us. As for those who didn't attend, it was an opportunity missed. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President. First off, I'd like to let everybody know that the Friends in the Cemetery will be having a booth at the upcoming Harvest Festival this weekend. You can look for them. They'll be selling funeral decorations, saddles for the gravestones. They have, I believe, three of them that'll be for sale. They're also having an auction, ticket auction for two tickets to Halloween, which will be good until the end of this season, and a pass, a family pass, carpool for African Safari Wildlife Park, which will be good throughout next year as well as this season. So when you're at the Harvest Festival this weekend, please stop by and see that group. They do some excellent work, which they don't get enough credit for. The Parks Rec Cemetery meeting will be October 8th at 2013 at 6:30 PM. In response to questions as to why I would choose not to attend a committee meeting where something as important, extremely important, as the full development of Waterworks Park is being discussed, is it is a committee meeting. According to the Ohio Sunshine laws, once four members of a seven-member council show up, the meeting and anything is discussed by all four of those, it becomes a full council meeting. If you were to invite Mr. Alexander to a full council meeting, I would by all means be more than willing to attend that meeting for as long as it takes. However, if it's me putting the city at risk of, and I want to make sure I get these items correct, out of the Ohio Sunshine Law Resource Manual, I believe there are penalties such as any person may, okay, we're looking at injunction against the city, we're looking at any acts discussed that come from that being declared invalid. There are obviously court costs and attorney fees that go along with this. These are not things, meetings, that I skip just because I don't want to be there and I don't want information. These are things that according to the State of Ohio Sunshine laws, that once a majority of a voting and elected body shows up, it becomes an open city council meeting, full council, no longer committee, and any decisions made from that meeting are subject to enforcement and remedies based upon this act. So please, do not take it as I don't care or I am already set in my ways. I am not. I want to listen to every issue, every side of this issue, and I am not against it. However, I don't want to put anything in jeopardy because I am violating the Sunshine Law Act. So I apologize for not being at the meeting, but there are reasons as to why I am not there. So, Madam President, thank you for your time tonight, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Ms. Banko?
Well, clearly we do need to seek some additional clarification once again from Mr. Wilber's part. I won't say anything further since he's not present tonight. I do want to say that Mr. Ockerman, the committee, has taken into account the fact that not everyone could be present, and Mr. Cobbler has graciously suggested that he would speak to Mr. Alexander about coming to a meeting of the council of the whole.
Thank you.
So that is something that people will ask Mr. Alexander about. And I also do want to thank Mr. Cobbler for finding Mr. Alexander as a speaker for us in the first place. I have a couple of announcements and then also one motion that I'd like to put forward tonight. The first announcement is a reminder that there will be a planning and development committee meeting on Tuesday, October 1st at 5:30 as regularly scheduled. Also, I will be holding a town hall meeting on Wednesday, October 16th at 7:00 PM at Mango Mamas, the banquet room behind Kokomo Bay at 40 Madison Street. That's Wednesday, October 16th at 7:00 PM at Mango Mamas, and at this town hall meeting there will be coffee, lemonade, and popcorn available. At a recent meeting, it was implied that due to my service on council, I might have been part of excessive spending, voting on Waterworks Park studies. Based upon my review of the Waterworks Park development line item for March of 2007 through December of 2011, the time period I was on council during Mayor Brown and Mayor Testers' time in office, I would like to report the fact that I voted for exactly one evaluation, the Hotel and Leisure Advisors Economic Impact Evaluation of the Fuller Project. In 2007, Mayor Brown had already had a feasibility evaluation performed, and a motion was made from the council floor by another council member for Hotel and Leisure Advisors, David Sangree's firm, to complete an economic impact evaluation for $10,000 of the Fuller Project. This motion passed 7-0 with council members both in favor of and against the Fuller Project, voting to have the evaluation. Why? Because this was valuable and necessary information in vetting the project. It provided crucial information about the expected components of the project, the anticipated tax revenue, and the anticipated job growth. Now, the Planning and Development Committee has discussed further the idea of requesting a scope of services from Hotel and Leisure Advisors to have feasibility and economic impact evaluations performed of the proposed Rose Project. Furthermore, our recent guest speaker, John Alexander, who has worked on development projects for Perrysburg, Toledo, and Lucas County, as Mr. Cobbler said, recommended that such usual and customary independent evaluations be performed as critical to answering residents' questions about the return on investment of the project. At this point, we are just seeking to request a free scope of services, not deciding any expenditure. I have a unanimous Planning and Development Committee recommendation from the September 3rd meeting in favor of the following motion. I move that council directs the administration to obtain a scope of services from Hotel and Leisure Advisors for preparing independent feasibility and economic impact evaluations for the proposed Washington Properties project.
I have a motion on the floor stated by Ms. Banko. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Any discussion? Mr. Snyder?
Thank you, Madam President. You said that, I know right now this is just free and there's no obligation and so forth, but those previous economic feasibility studies, how did those work out for us? Did they, the paper that they printed on, is it worth anything at the moment?
It was very valuable at the time because it told us what the anticipated revenue on return on investment from the project would be.
Was it realized?
It was very helpful and explained to residents why people wanted to go ahead with the Fuller Project. It was a critical tool and piece of information.
And was any of that realized?
Well, unfortunately, the Fuller Group was not responsible for the Great Recession.
Any other discussion? Ms. Phillips?
I voted to go ahead with this because I would like to make sure that what is chosen to go on that property will bring money to the city. I would hate to think that we approve a project which is not as important, does not bring as much money, does not give us as much impetus as we hope. I would love to see this go through. I would love to see the project take care on some, take a life on its own if necessary, but are we picking the right things? Maybe Mr. Rose, I don't know, has he done one of these? Or does he have some clue as to what will come out of this in the long run? Aren't we trying to draw money and people to the city? And I just thought, I think this is probably a good idea to have this feasibility, and the people that did the first one, they kind of have an idea of what's going on, so it would not be nearly as expensive, and it certainly would be better than to have something built that doesn't work.
I'm just going to provide some historic information. I have no, if you choose to vote on this, that's fine. There were two studies done, one by Hotel Leisure and the other one done by Fifth Third Bank. Fifth Third Bank cautioned us to not engage in an activity with Fuller, and Hotel Leisure said that it was fine. So I just give you that information as a historic value. Ms. Banko?
I would say there was a more complex reading of that in that Fifth Third Bank was not doing an economic impact or feasibility study. They were doing a financial capacity evaluation of the developer, and they concluded that both the Stonehenge Group, which was the other project that was initially considered, and the Fuller Group had the financial capacity to complete their projects as proposed. And then the gentleman who was doing the presentation on the, on his financial reports went on to give his opinion on which project he thought was preferable, and Mayor Brown opposed that as being outside the scope of services for what the bank had been asked to do. So there is a more complex story on that.
I guess my point is just, you can get anything from any report. When that was done, was there a final project, like everything on paper and this is what it was going to be?
Yes.
That was everything? Because I guess what I'm confused about is, in order for us to be told if something's going to work or not, we need to have something. And you guys keep focusing on that this is conceptual, well, how can we do a feasibility study on something that doesn't exist? I guess is what I'm confused about.
There was no final project at the point in time that this was done. This was actually done before the city ever entered into formal negotiations with Fuller because it was done, the feasibility study, I believe, was completed in August of 2007, and then the economic impact study was finalized in October of 2007. So it was even before the zoning change election, before anybody knew that negotiations with Fuller would move forward.
So there was no project on the table? I mean, it was just, there was just a developer possibly interested in Fuller?
There, we had, we had a 20-page proposal from them. We had a 20-page proposal from them.
A lot more than we have now.
Well, that's not our fault. We made a proposal.
I think this is just premature.
All we're doing right now is asking for a scope of services. By the time we get back the proposal from the firm, and by the time it gets onto the council agenda, and by the time we have re-read and vote on whether or not to actually do the project, or whether or not to actually do the evaluation, you know, we could be looking at the end of December, and I would certainly hope that by that time, the talks would have progressed so that we would have at least 20 pages from Washington Properties.
20 pages, I would say the same thing.
This is just to request a scope of services, nothing more.
And again, I guess I have the same question as that I did last time this was brought up. Why just this group? I mean, is it, do we have any idea, maybe something else cheaper, or is there a reason why we're going with this group again?
They did the work.
Issue every side of this issue, and I am not against it. However, I don't want to put anything in jeopardy because I am violating the Sunshine Law Act. So, I apologize for not being at the meeting, but there are reasons as to why I am not there. So, Madam President, thank you for your time tonight, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Ms. Binko.
Well, clearly we do need to seek some additional clarification, once again, from Mr. Wilber's part. I won't say anything further since he's not present tonight. I do want to say that Mr. Ackerman, the committee, has taken into account the fact that not everyone could be present, and Mr. Cobbler has graciously suggested that he would speak to Mr. Alexander about coming to a meeting at the council of the whole. So, that is something that people ask Mr. Alexander about. And I also do want to thank Mr. Cobbler for finding Mr. Alexander as a speaker for us in the first place. I have a couple of announcements and then also one motion that I'd like to put forward tonight. The first announcement is a reminder that there will be a Planning and Development Committee meeting on Tuesday, October 1st, at 5:30 as regularly scheduled. Also, I will be holding a town hall meeting on Wednesday, October 16th, at 7:00 PM at Mango Mamas, the banquet room behind Kokomo Bay at 40 Madison Street. That's Wednesday, October 16th, at 7:00 PM at Mango Mamas. And at this town hall meeting, there will be coffee, lemonade, and popcorn available. At our recent meeting, it was implied that due to my service on council, I might have been part of excessive spending, voting on Waterworks Park studies. Based upon my review of the Waterworks Park development line item for March of 2007 through December of 2011, the time period I was on council during Mayor Brown and Mayor Testers' time in office, I would like to report the fact that I voted for exactly one evaluation, the Hotel and Leisure Advisors Economic Impact Evaluation of the Fuller Project. In 2007, Mayor Brown had already had feasibility evaluation performed, and a motion was made from the council floor by another council member for Hotel and Leisure Advisors, David Sangree's firm, to complete an economic impact evaluation for $10,000 of the Fuller Project. This motion passed 7-0 with council members both in favor of and against the Fuller Project, voting they have the evaluation. Why? Because this was valuable and necessary information in vetting the project. It provided crucial information about the expected components of the project, the anticipated tax revenue, and the anticipated job growth. Now, the Planning and Development Committee has discussed further the idea of requesting a scope of services from Hotel and Leisure Advisors to have feasibility and economic impact evaluations performed of the proposed Rose Project. Furthermore, our recent guest speaker, John Alexander, who has worked on development projects for Perry's Grove, Toledo, and Lucas County, as Mr. Cobbler said, recommended that such usual and customary independent evaluations be performed as critical to answering residents' questions about the return on investment of the project. At this point, we are just seeking to request a free scope of services, not deciding any expenditure. I have a unanimous Planning and Development Committee recommendation from the September 3rd meeting in favor of the following motion. I move that council directs the administration to obtain a scope of services from Hotel and Leisure Advisors for preparing independent feasibility and economic impact evaluations for the proposed Washington Properties Project.
I have a motion on the floor stated by Ms. Binko. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Any discussion? Mr. Snyder.
Thank you, Madam President. You said that, I know, I know right now this is just free and there's no obligation and so forth, but those previous economic feasibility studies, how did those work out for us? Did they, the paper that they printed on, is it worth anything at the moment?
It was very valuable at the time because it told us what the anticipated revenue on return on investment from the, from the project would be.
Was it realized?
It was very helpful and explained to residents why people wanted to go ahead with the Fuller Project. It was a critical tool and piece of information.
And was that not realized?
Well, unfortunately, the Fuller Group was not responsible for the Great Recession.
Any other discussion? Ms. Phillips.
And I voted to go ahead with this because I would like to make sure that what is chosen to go on that property will bring money to the city. I would hate to think that we approve a project which is not as important, does not bring as much money, does not give us as much impetus as we hope. I would love to see this go through. I would love to see the project take care on some, take a life on its own if necessary. But are we picking the right things? Maybe Mr. Rose, I don't know, has he done one of these? Or does he have some clue as to what will come out of this in the long run? Aren't we trying to draw money and people to the city? And I just thought, I think this is probably a good idea to have this feasibility. And the people that did the first one, they kind of have an idea of what's going on, so it would not be nearly as expensive. And it certainly would be better than to have something built that doesn't work.
I'm just going to provide some historic information. I have no, if you choose to vote on this, this is fine. There were two studies done, one by Hotel Leisure and the other one done by Fifth Third Bank. Fifth Third Bank cautioned us to not engage in an activity with the Corps, and Hotel Leisure said that it was fine. So, I just give you that information as a historic value. Ms. Binko.
I would say there's a more complex reading of that in that Fifth Third Bank was not doing an economic impact or feasibility study. They were doing a financial capacity evaluation of the developer, and they concluded that both the Stonehenge Group, which was the other project that was initially considered, and the Fuller Group had the financial capacity to complete their projects as proposed. And then, the gentleman who was doing the presentation on the, on his financial reports went on to give his opinion on which project he thought was preferable, and Mayor Brown opposed that as being outside the scope of services for what the bank had been asked to do. So, there is a more complex story on that.
I guess my point is just, you can get anything from any report. When that was done, was there a final project, like everything on paper and this is what it was going to be?
Yes.
That was everything, because I guess what I'm confused about is, in order for us to be told if something's going to work or not, we need to have something. And you guys keep focusing on that this is conceptual, well, how can we do a feasibility study on something that doesn't exist? I guess is what I'm confused about.
There was no final project at this point in time that this was done. This was actually done before the city ever entered into formal negotiations with Fuller because it was done, the feasibility study, I believe, was completed in August of 2007, and then the economic impact study was finalized in October of 2007. So, it was even before the zoning change election, before, before anybody knew that negotiations with Fuller would move forward.
So, there was no project over the table? I mean, it was just, there was just a developer possibly interested in Fuller?
There, we had, we had a 20-page proposal from them. We had a 20-page proposal from them.
A lot more than we have now.
Well, that's not our fault. We made a proposal.
I think, I think this is just premature.
All we're doing right now is asking for a scope of services. By the time we get back the proposal from the firm, and by the time it gets onto the council agenda, and by the time we have pre-readings and vote on whether or not to actually do the project, or whether or not to actually do the evaluation, you know, we could be looking at the end of December, and I would certainly hope that by that time, the talks would have progressed so that we would have at least 20 pages from Washington Properties.
Ms. Binko.
I would basically say the same thing. This is just to request a scope of services, nothing more.
And again, I guess I have the same question as, that I did last time this was brought up. Why just this group? I mean, is that, do we have any idea, maybe something else is cheaper, or is there a reason why we're going with this group again?
They did the work before. We got an ordinance on the agenda from the KDA saying that we're asking them to do sewer relining work because they did the work before. This will be underneath a $5,000 amount at which sending out a RFP would be required. And Hotel and Leisure Advisors is very experienced in doing these types of studies for the hospitality world, and since the fishing lodge with the offshore condos is an important component of Mr. Rose's concept, it seems important to have somebody from that field who is top in the field to do that. And the people who do these studies are successful because their studies are accurate, because investors look at these studies or these evaluations and use that to base their decision on whether or not they're going to invest their dollars in this. So, these aren't, you know, random numbers. This isn't just somebody's off-the-top-of-the-head opinion as a consultant.
Let the Court please call a roll. I start. Mrs. DeFritis, if you'd like.
Motion. I move that council directs the administration to obtain scope of services from Hotel and Leisure Advisors for preparing independent feasibility and economic impact evaluations for the proposed Washington Properties Project. No. Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Cobbler?
Yes.
Mr. Ackerman?
No.
Ms. Binko?
Yes.
Mrs. Mel?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
No.
Thank you. The motion passes. It will be, it will be in the air to perform when it gets back to the House of Representatives.
I just wanted to add a couple of other things. Mr. Alexander, our guest speaker, he talked about the development highway in which there's a partnership with the developer, but also a need about the project. Mutuality of interest with the developer and a conflict of interest with the developer. In other words, trust but verify. And I think there seem to be rumors out there that those council members who are raising questions or seeking an independent evaluation of the project, or saying that council should exercise its legitimate powers to set a framework for development must be against development on the Waterworks property. Nothing to be further from the truth. I think we are all for a successful development. That any developer in the project are part of achieving that. Setting parameters for negotiations is part of achieving that. And as Chair of the Planning and Development Committee, I want to say that I think everyone on the Planning and Development Committee is asking tough questions that need to be answered. And getting one who was a student, Councilwoman Phillips, knows that she asks tough questions. And Councilwoman Phillips had one in Councilman Cobbler's sons as a student, so she must know that Councilman Cobbler asked tough questions. And I was her student, so she must know that I asked tough questions. In fact, she encouraged us to. Yet, she agreed to serve on the committee as a brand-new council member in spite of that. No credible, experienced developer is going to run from tough questions any more than an excellent teacher will. We are not putting up roadblocks on the development highway. We are just saying that we need to observe the rules of the road to have a successful development. Sitting at this table with Councilwoman Phillips makes me think about high school memories, which is a little unfortunate for me because high school was not the best years of my life. But think for a moment, not at what he says or what others say about him. You hope he's Prince Charming, but in the days before cell phones, you have money to call your parents or a cab if he turns out to be a little less than charming. In other words, as we travel the development highway, let's prepare for all eventualities along the way. That's all tonight. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Cobbler, we're in touch with Mr. Alexander. Please keep in touch with him so that I can make sure that he's on board with the call with the committee. We'll just, you know, be on his schedule and we'll just agree on it. Okay. Mrs. Mel?
I just have one thing. The Raider Park Clinton Art Council is having their last art walk downtown on Thursday, September 26th, from 5:00 to 8:00. They've got some great turnouts, and I hope everyone will support that. It's really a lot of fun. I know there's a lot of things going on, but it is fun for everybody. And that's about it.
And they're having a whole imagination station for children.
Are they?
It's a, everyone has been asked to bring cardboard, bring cardboard boxes to the pool, wrappers, tissue paper, and then they're going to do something at Friendship Park for Kids.
Right.
Use their imagination to make something from all this stuff. So, it's a, very much encouraged to be a family event for this last one, so. You can bring your kids down.
We go to gather and kneel first.
Yes. Go eat and then go take a walk.
Mr. Snyder?
Oh, sorry. I was thinking about a problem. Just a few quick things tonight. Mark your calendars for November 9th, Saturday, November 9th, the Portland Firefighters Association Annual Feather Party. The doors open at?
6:00.
6:00. It's a free event, but there are raffle tickets for a variety of activities. Unfortunately, I left mine at my desk. See any member of the Firefighters Association to get those tickets. The Portland High School Marching Band and Choirs is taking a trip to Chicago, and they are raffling off four seats to the Saturday, November 23rd, that's the Saturday before Thanksgiving, Ohio State versus Indiana football game in Columbus. See any member of the Portland High School Marching Band, any member of the Portland High School Choir, Rod Miller, and I forgot the band or the choir director's name right at the moment. They're $5 a ticket, five tickets for $20, and all the proceeds go to help the kids pay for their, their trip. Tip from the chief tonight, that's going to be a two-for-Tuesday, just because of the seasonality and so forth, as the temperatures start to cool, please make sure that you get a chimney sweep out to clean your fireplace. I know many of them have to travel a great distance to get to Portland and talk to your neighbors. They usually give a discount if they can get multiple households in the same trip. And likewise, in a few, few weeks, the leaves will start to fall from the trees. People will start raking them to the, to the curb. Don't rake them on the street, but if it happens, be mindful not to park your car on a pile of leaves. Every year, we have one house fire, or excuse me, one car fire because somebody parks their car on top of dry leaves. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DeFritis.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that next Tuesday, October, oh, no, not next Tuesday, October 1st, is that next Tuesday? Yeah, that's, okay. Next Tuesday, October 1st, we'll have an infrastructure meeting at 7:30 in the City Hall. And also, I wanted to just make a quick comment about the planning meeting. I too am not on the committee, so that's why I was not there. And we were given about 24 hours notice on it, and I was teaching a classical in Green, so there's no way I could get out of it. I would love to hear what he had to say, but I was not on the committee, so, and that's all. Thank you.
Ms. Phillips?
The tree commission met, and the minutes for the tree commission on 9:10 will be available at the next meeting. And the fans, obviously, they are busy working on their major projects. Also, from the planning commission, I, I really think we need to find out what we can get off of that land and not just go blankety-blank and pick anything. We need to think about what we're doing there. And that's why I was in favor of this feasibility study. That's all I have.
Members of the audience. Mr. Yanke?
Mr. Yanke, 117 Cedar Street. Madam President, is Mr. Ackerman corrected his assumption that he read earlier?
According to the law director, Mr. Ackerman is correct. I have checked this out with the law director previously.
No, is that?
We've also gotten multiple information from Corr, who so kindly gave us the Sunshine Law books.
Right. Okay, but it doesn't mean that the councilperson necessarily has to participate into the meeting.
No.
Can they sit back with the audience?
They can, but I will tell you that there was an issue a few months back, and I won't tell you what committee or what happened, but the councilmen in the room made no comment, simply nodded in agreement. And that constituted an affirmation of what was going to come to the floor, which meant that it was perceived, and none of this is necessarily going to happen, it's just perceived that now it comes to the council chambers with a vote already in place, that council doesn't get to debate that, that they've already come to council floor with a vote of four votes. And, and that's what the Sunshine Law protects, is that council business is not done outside the council chambers. It's a very, I will not disagree with anybody in this room or with any council member. It is a very, very fine line, and we are being very scrutinized, particularly by your group. And, and that's not a bad, I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but as we're entering into development with Mr. Rose or anybody else who might come forth with the development project, what happens in a meeting five months ago could negate a final vote down the road. So, it, it's just something that we have to be particularly mindful of.
Now, if my math is correct, four members equals a majority.
Correct.
And there was four members at that meeting?
Correct.
And where did we go wrong now?
And, and I'm not saying we did anything wrong. I would have said, I would have told you if you had, if anybody had asked my advice, I would have told the committee as three members of council who could call a special council meeting, that they would have been better off to call a special council meeting in which the clerk would have been there to take minutes, and I would have presided over, would have been a far better thing to do. Because now you have an official council meeting, and so, questions can be asked and things can be debated. And that's what you can't do in a committee meeting with four members. You can't have four members engaged in discussion and debate.
Right. Now, we have Ms. DeFritis saying that she missed the meeting. She wanted to go to the meeting to gather information, but she couldn't make it. Now, she would come if she wasn't teaching at a big gym, so.
I don't know. I never attend any committee meetings and I'm not on. I'm on three committees, and that's what I attend because of the Sunshine Law.
Or you just don't want the information?
If that was an open council meeting, I would have been there.
I thought it was an open council.
It was a committee.
Not a council meeting, but a, a committee meeting. You don't belong at a committee meeting?
I'm not, I don't serve on the committee.
So, what?
That's the, that's the issue, Mr. Yanke.
I've sat in committee meetings where there's been more than three members?
Yes, you have.
And?
I will agree with you, and that, and I will tell you, that was not proper.
Okay.
It's a very, I'm telling you, and we can debate this all night.
Well, we're not, because I gotta go home and watch, I didn't dance him with the stuff.
I am telling you, it's a very, it is a very, very, very fine line. It is a difference between debate and gathering information. But like I told you, in this one instance, the councilperson didn't even say anything. They just nodded in affirmation, and as soon as someone saw that, and again, it was a member of your committee, they questioned whether we violated the Sunshine Law because it indicates that they would now come into council with a four vote.
Now, I videotaped that meeting, that committee meeting. So, anyone wants to see the videotape or the DVD disc, they're welcome to it.
And we're not saying anything happened.
I'm just saying, I'm not going to keep advertising, but that's all. Anybody that's interested.
We're just saying that people really need to be careful. That's why when Mr. Cobbler suggests to bring Mr. Alexander into a regular council meeting, that's really the best way to handle it. And I, and I applaud him for doing that and making that effort. Because he, you know, I read the newspaper article. It was very worthwhile to hear that information, but again, it would have been better off in a regular council meeting.
Okay, and you should have saw it on video. It was even more compelling. And I have another statement. What I'd like to say is, if you guys want to not complicate the issue about development in Waterworks Park, just step up and, let's say, let's put in a park, a non-commercial development. This way, there's no, no kind of confusion or anything like that with the developer. The city can be the developer, and there's not going to be, have to be a feasibility study or anything like that. We just go ahead and, and develop a nice first-class park in Waterworks Park and have the people come in and enjoy themselves. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else this evening? Mr. Ellis?
Good evening. On September 5th, I-
Mr. Ellis, would you sit your name and address?
Yes, Richard Ellis, Commander, VFW 248, Port Clinton. And on September 5th, I sent three letters, one to Mr. Colston, one to Mr. Leone, and one to Mr. Wilbur. And some of you do have copies of that on your desk. I apologize, our copier was running out of ink, so I couldn't get enough copies to go around. But in that September 5th letter, I was formally requesting the third step that is evidently in the rules and regulations of how you go about protesting a water bill. I clearly was not afforded the second step, which I applied for, so I, with legal representation advising me to apply for the third step, that is what I did. That was September 5th. I assumed that they received the letters at least by the 7th, so we're right at, going on three weeks now, and I've not received any response, and I just wondered if I could get a verbal response at this meeting tonight from anybody.
Unfortunately, this is now in the hands of the law director, and since he's not here, I apologize, but I can't give you a response, and neither can Mr. Colston without, well, I don't know what the response is, so I can't give that to you. And even if Mr. Colston did without our legal representative here, I apologize, but can't give you a verbal response this evening.
Is he normally, does he normally attend these meetings?
Yes, but I will tell you, he's sick, he's sick, and she's sick. Everybody's out sick this evening.
Well, they have my tendencies.
But normally, normally, Mr. Wilber, normally, Mr. Wilber's here, and I would suggest that it's Mr. Wilber that you can contact at this point.
Well, as I said, it's been three weeks, and I've not received any response from anybody. I'd also like to ask a question of Mr. Colston. Did you speak with Bonnie from Toledo TV 13 News?
Just how do you?
Did you tell her that you discussed this issue at length with city council?
Do I do that?
Did you tell her that you discussed it with anybody?
Discussed it with you.
Now, that isn't the report that I got. And she said that this, you discussed it, discussed it at length and that the decision was made, and-
I told her what the process was of how we do our stuff here, and what the verdict was, and what we offered to do for you, and told her everything like that. She said, "Okay, and it looks like you can't resolve your case. That's what we're going to recommend," and that's what she told me on the phone, for you to get legal counsel. That's what she told me.
Did you, in a letter dated on July 2nd of 13, addressed to me, number six in your, you have six listed decision, or six listed items here, did you say, and I'll quote, "The decision of this adjustment committee is now final"?
In the letter that I sent to you?
Yes. I can show it to you if you'd like.
Yeah. Yeah, we offered to give you half, and that's what the adjustment committee said. That's what we did, right? Yeah. Absolutely. It was supposed to give you half, correct?
Uh, yes.
And you just came back to the committee and said you did not like that, you went and got legal represented?
We never-
What we're not going to talk about, you talked to Mr. Wilber. I'm done with that. Thank you.
One last thing, if I could. Is there an official-
What we're not going to talk about, you talked to Mr. Wilber, I'm done with that. Thank you.
One last thing, if I could. Is there an official form that I must fill out to request the, an accurate copy of the meeting, the very first and only meeting that I've had with, on this issue? Is there an official, an official request, or do we call it subpoena?
Just make a public records request.
Okay, thank you.
To Mrs. Porter. Anyone else this evening?
Samuel Kinzer, 3670 East Highland Drive, Portland. And this is just-
Samuel, we didn't hear your address.
3670 East Highland Drive, Portland. Okay, this is just on the whole subject of developing this park. You know, I see this park as a valuable part of Portland. It's, you know, just a nice place. It has, it has lots of uses, and, you know, I've read a document recently that said that Ezekiel Haynes, who's one of the, he plotted out Portland, you know, kind of had a founding father kind of thing going on with it, and he said that, you know, this is a public park for the use of everyone, just for the enjoyment of the public. And it would be like lose the ability to have, you know, fun in the park, just, you know, anything. But we would lose the major attractions and the income from those attractions, from certain events like the walleye fest, I don't know, the tall ships, then some of those movies that they just have play in the park, and, you know, collect admission for those. And, you know, we would lose the use of that gravel parking lot they have out there for other stuff, and just for normal parking, just use. And, you know, it would just, we would lose another part of Portland. I mean, we've done so many things that are just, you know, taken out of school, that there's so many uses for things that we could have around here, but we're just, you know, throwing them away. We could, I mean, this is a tourist town. I mean, we need attractions like the walleye fest, and tall ships, and stuff like that. We, we can't really, we're not, we're not really anything without those. If you take away that part, then, you know, we're not going to have that, and we're going to be just a little bit less popular and a little bit less useful for Portland. As you say, that they're going to bring jobs if we develop, but, you know, I don't think it's going to be anything major, like no full-time jobs, maybe a few minimum wage jobs. But, you know, and also, if we built there, all, some people on Perry Street, instead of seeing that view of the lake, we would see the back of a cement wall, and, you know, that would bring down a lot of prices on houses that are kicked down on the market. And, you know, everybody I've talked to just agrees on this. I don't think I've met one person yet who hasn't agreed with me. It just doesn't seem like a very good idea to develop on this land. You know, I could go on for hours about this idea.
Well, you only have five minutes.
But I just don't think it's a good idea to do this, and, you know, our leaders, you know, don't think that it's, think that it's a good idea. You know, I don't see that they're doing a good job leading, because I just don't see the negative side of it.
Anyone else?
Jerry Kilbom, 121 Walrus Street. I've been driving around quite a bit here in the last month or so, and I've been to Fremont, I've been to Bellevue, Norwalk, Denly, Sandusky, and I've been watching the news quite a bit, and I've been up through Toledo. And just on the news the other day, Toledo, up there, is developing a dog park for people to go walk their dogs. Well, I can't figure out, they're trying to develop a park for walking dogs, and Portland, they're wanting to sell their park and get rid of their park. We only got two parks, you might as well say, Waterworks Park and Lakeview Park. Portage Park was always considered as half-tilt, and hardly anybody went out there, and nobody even knows where it is. You could tell Portage Park, you know, around here, a lot of people don't even know where it's at. Now, I have to explain to them where it's at. But I can't figure out why Portland wanted to develop their park and get rid of it when everybody else is developing parks.
I do just want to correct one thing on Portage Park, because I live in the neighborhood.
I know you do.
On Tuesdays and Thursday nights, you can't find a place to park, because there's so much activity going on in Portage Park. People have parked in my driveway who I have absolutely no idea who they are, because they can't find a parking place on the road. The park is filled with children all the time. There's a playground down there, so please don't dish or use the Portage Park. It is quite, it's used quite a bit, and it is deserving of the improvements that have been made to it. It is quite the park, so...
Well, I've been down past there, I mean, a few times, but I haven't seen a whole lot of kids down there. I mean, sure, there's kids down there playing, but I don't know what time of the day they are all down there.
Well, they play soccer, they play football, they play soccer. Beehive, no, it's not Beehive, probably.
I guess there are people that, and I have to explain to them where Portage Park was there, because there's no sign up, it says, "Portage Park, this direction," you know?
But it's used quite a bit, you should just know that.
But I, my main complaint is, why Portland want to get rid of their park when everybody else is making parks?
Anyone else?
They've got all kinds of parks over there.
Mr. Holman?
Larry Holman, 409 West Street. Has the city's infrastructure determined who's going to maintain the pumps on the Lake Shore Drive, Tappy Drive? Has that been determined?
No.
No?
No.
Anyone else this evening?
Roger Smith, 218 West Forestry. The last city council meeting, it was mentioned that an EPA study was going to be done in Waterworks Park. What does that EPA study involve that we haven't already studied out there?
That would be a question that Mr., that Mayor Leone would answer.
Okay, there has, has there ever been an EPA study to find out whether or not they can put footers to hold buildings that size?
Actually, Mr. Smith, I do know that that is one of the things they're looking at. As I remember some of the discussion, that is one of the things that they're looking at under this EPA study.
But there was also an environmental study done that came back negative, is that true?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I can't, I can't answer it intelligently.
Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Mrs. French?
She knows me already. Janet French, 1719 State Street.
I have a long memory.
I do, too. I want to know, you, do you want to sell the park? Do you want to sell that land?
That's unsure at this moment.
Okay. If someone wanted to buy that land, could you give them a deed and a clear title to that land?
I can't answer that. That would be a question for Mr. Wilber.
You, as council members, should know that. You should know whether you can give a clear deed and title on that land, if that's what you want to do. And I think that's a good question for you.
Anyone else this evening? Mr. Wilber?
Tim Weaver, Short Street, Portland. Me and my lady friend, last, last week, went to Subway and picked up a sub, went down to Waterworks Park, sat on picnic tables, watched the people fishing, and the activity around there, and I cut the sink, and I counted, there was over 40 people in and around there. So when we left to go home, I went by Lakeview Park. There were six. So it seems like the Waterworks Park's more popular, even though you do try to make it as trashy as you possibly can to turn everybody against it.
Anyone else this evening? Claire Bell?
That deed that he spoke of is original from Ezekiel Haynes, it is all legal and everything. And it says we cannot sell the property, it belongs to all the people. It's the only Waterworks Park we have, the water park we got. Why don't you, why don't you take that thing you're going downtown and put it on park there?
Anyone else this evening? Seeing none, I will ask for motion to adjourn, this bank. Margaret Herd, yes? Oh, I'm sorry. Make motion to adjourn. Oh, okay. I'll second that. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, we are adjourned.